Hi everybody, welcome to our next session of Renovare. This is our Bible study series that we're working through at the moment. I'm really glad that you've joined us and I really hope that this evening you will find something that encourages spiritual renewal in your life, that the Holy Spirit will bring to life for you. Throughout this series, we're looking at old Christian traditions and we're offering new reflection on them, thinking what does that look like for us today? What does that look like for me today? And so this evening, or whenever it is you're watching this, we're going to be looking at the holiness tradition. And we're going to be thinking about, you know, trying to live this virtuous life, all those who historically were part of the holiness tradition. What does that tell us for now? What does that teach us for today? And so as we begin this session, I wonder for you, when you think of holiness, what images does that conjure up in your mind? What does that word mean to you? Holiness. Well, the holiness tradition itself was formed in the early 18th century. And that was when John Wesley and a group of his friends formed this, this group, if you like, from their church. And they were known, nicknamed, if you like, as the Holy Club. Because this group of friends, they began to focus on moral laxity. They began to consider what they felt was Christians living in a way that Christians shouldn't live. And they decided as a group that they would try to overcome sinful habits. They felt that was very important for people of God. What happened was that group of friends developed a method for living. And they became known as the Methodist Church. And for us within the salvation army, we were born out of that tradition. So the holiness tradition is very much at the heart of who we are historically. And I hope who we are today. Within the salvation army, we have a very strong holiness teaching. From many years ago, when we, you know, had particular meetings at particular times. I remember the days of the morning holiness meeting, the afternoon praise meeting and the evening salvation meeting. We literally set aside one time of worship purely dedicated to making sure there was teaching on holiness and an opportunity to consider and respond to God's call for us to be holy. I really hope that still today, there is a focus on holiness. And so this evening, it's so appropriate that this is part of our Bible study. And I hope this evening, as we consider what holiness means for us and how we apply that to our own faith and to our own living, I pray that God will help us and guide us as we do that today. As we work through this Bible study, we will follow a similar format to last month. We will first of all, stop and look at the life of Jesus. We will think about where we see holiness in his life, looking at his teaching and his word and his own experience. We will then take a wider look at scripture and think about what else the Bible tells us about holiness and the call to be holy. We will then take moments to apply that to our own life and to have reflection about that before we share in prayer and suggestions of next steps. And so we begin by looking to the life of Jesus. We're told in many places in scripture that Jesus, living on earth, you know, the divinity and humanity combined in him was like no other. We're told that he was sinless and spotless and pure, that he indeed lived a life of holiness. There's references I share with you, for example, in 2 Corinthians, where we're told that, you know, because Jesus had no sin, he was made to be seen on our behalf. That as he died on the cross, he died faultless and without sin. It's in Hebrews 7 that it's described that Jesus is the most fitting high priest, the most fitting one, because he's holy and innocent. He's undefiled, he's separated from sinners. And that's why he can be exalted above the heavens. We're reminded in Hebrews again, but in chapter four, that we have a high priest who, yes, he walked this earth and yes, he sympathizes with our weakness. But he is one who has been tempted by all things. And yet he is without sin. And so when we look to the life of Jesus, it can feel an incredibly tall order. It can feel like a very different example and case study for us. Yet his holiness is something for us to reflect on today. It's something that we can take a look at and see. And so as we look at just one time in the life of Jesus tonight, and we turn to look at how he acted and lived out amongst temptation and in the wilderness, we will see this great example of holiness in action. We will see someone who, you know, he kept his life for God. He kept close to the Father, that even in times of weakness, even in times of temptation, he still remained holy. And that's a wonderful example to us. So just now, I invite you to turn with me as we look particularly at Matthew's Gospel at chapter four and verses one through to 11, where we read about Jesus in the wilderness.
Jesus was led by the Spirit into the wilderness to be tempted by the devil. After fasting forty days and forty nights, he was hungry. The tempter came to him and said, "If you are the Son of God, tell these stones to become bread." Jesus answered, "It is written, 'Man shall not live on bread alone, but on every word that comes from the mouth of God.'" Then the devil took him to the holy city and had him stand on the highest point at the temple. "If you are the Son of God," he said, "throw yourself down; for it is written, 'He will command his angels concerning you, and they will lift you up in their hands, so that you will not strike your foot against a stone.'" Jesus answered him, "It is also written, 'Do not put the Lord your God to the test.'" Again, the devil took him to a very high mountain and showed him all the kingdoms of the world and their splendor. "All of this I will give you," he said, "if you will bow down and worship me." Jesus said to him, "Away from me, Satan; for it is written, 'Worship the Lord your God and serve him only.'" And then the devil left him, and angels came and attended him.
That verse I referenced from Hebrews chapter four reminded us that, you know, Jesus had the living experience and example of what it was to be human, what it was to be tempted, what it was to feel weak and to feel tired and to feel frustrated. And yet he was without sin. And there in those verses from Matthew, we see this real life experience and example of what Jesus went through. We see a time when, you know, just before this had taken place, at the end of Matthew's Gospel, chapter three, we hear that Jesus is baptized in, from Galilee, he comes into the river Jordan and John baptizes him. And in that moment, there is this great encouragement and declaration from heaven. As he comes up out of the water from being baptized, everybody can see it and hear it, that God says, "This is my Son, whom I love; with him I am well pleased." And from that high and beautiful and precious experience, Jesus goes, led by the Spirit, to the wilderness, where he then is tested and tempted. And I think that example there is so true for us. When we have those moments of positivity, when we have those moments where things are going well, when we are close to the Lord and we sense his blessing and his calling upon us, we too can be sure that challenging times will come. And we're living through some of those in these days. We're living through some of those challenges. We can be sure in this life, we will have trouble. That's one of the other things Jesus says. We can be sure that there will be times when we are weak, when we are tired, when we are frustrated. We can be sure that there will be times when we are tempted and we are tested. But in the life of Jesus, we see this example that holiness can be maintained. And Jesus shows us these key resources we have. He stays close to the Father, he remains a person of prayer. He knows the scriptures and he knows the word of God. And so as the devil tests him and tempts him, he is able to respond and to maintain his cleanliness, to maintain his holiness, to maintain that he is all for God. As the devil tests him, he responds with scripture that's appropriately in context quoted. And then as the devil tests again and tempts once again, the devil picks up on the fact that scripture is being used and the devil himself uses scripture to test him. But Jesus more than knows the word of God in a knowledgeable way. He knows the word of God within his heart. And he's able to say, "That's not what's meant." And so for you and I, you know, when we are being tested and tempted, when we are weak and worn out, you know, we're told he was hungry here. We're told he hadn't eaten because he'd fasted for forty days and forty nights. You know, we can get hangover when we miss a meal and we get angry because we're hungry, you know. And yet here, Jesus shows the extent of that control over his holiness. That even in those times, he will know the word of God, but he will know God and be able to beat off the devil. In these moments of testing and temptation, the devil, you know, he challenges Jesus about, first of all, his bread, his provisions. He's hungry and he tempts him to, you know, to create something else to feed him, even though he's fasting. He tempts him with power and with authority, something that can often trip us up as humans. When we think we can get one up over people, when we think we can look clever or be the funny one, we too can be tempted. And he tempts him about being worshipped. But Jesus knows that the true worship, the true power, the true authority, it only comes from God. And I wonder for us tonight, as we look at the life of Jesus, what does that teach us about how we live? About how we deal with temptation? Temptation when we long for different provision? Temptation when we long for power or for recognition? The life of Jesus has so much to teach us about holiness. And there's more scripture for us to consider too. All throughout scripture, we can see how many people of God try to live holy lives. In the Old Testament, we can look to the Israelites and see that for them to live a life of holiness was about separating what's clean and what's unclean. And they literally tried to keep themselves away from anything that would make them unclean. In the New Testament, we can see this as well. And even in the life of the disciples and the life of the Pharisees, we can see them grappling with this, what is it that makes us unclean? What is it that keeps us holy? What is it that we can do? What is it that we can't do in order to be holy? In order to be good enough for God? We see that rituals were incredibly important to them. That the importance of washing, the importance of what you eat and what you don't eat, for them, they were the things that kept them clean. And throughout scripture, in the Old Testament, the prophets were calling people to understand that it's not those outward things that keep you clean, it's about your heart. And in the New Testament, we hear Jesus challenge the Pharisees, trying to help them understand, it's not what's on the outside that makes you clean. It's about what's on the inside. I'm particularly mindful of this passage of scripture. So I invite you to turn with me just now to Matthew's Gospel again, but this time to chapter 15. And we're going to listen to those first 11 verses, verses which speak about and encounter Jesus had with the Pharisees.
Some Pharisees and teachers of the law came to Jesus from Jerusalem. And they asked, "Why do your disciples break the tradition of the elders? They don't wash their hands before they eat." Jesus replied, "And why do you break the command of God for the sake of your tradition? For God said, 'Honor your father and mother; and anyone who curses their father or mother is to be put to death.' But you say that if anyone declares that what might have been used to help their father or mother is devoted to God, they are not to honor their father or mother with it. Thus you nullify the word of God for the sake of your tradition. You hypocrites! Isaiah was right when he prophesied about you. These people honor me with their lips, but their hearts are far from me. They worship me in vain; their teachings are merely human rules." Jesus called the crowd to him and he said, "Listen and understand: What goes into someone's mouth does not defile them; but what comes out of their mouth, that is what defiles them."
In those verses, we hear Jesus reminding the Pharisees that, you know, you can do all the rituals, you can do everything else. But if you're still speaking things that are unclean, then that tells me your heart is not clean. What we see is this teaching about the importance of the heart. And in fact, this is a bit of a tongue twister, but the heart of the matter is the matter of the heart. And as we think about holiness today, and as we reflect on that for ourselves, I pray that we will hear that scriptural teaching for us, that when it comes to holiness, the heart of the matter really is the matter of the heart. Because right through from the Old Testament, where the prophets were trying to encourage people to understand that you can live this religious life, you can follow all the Levitical laws and all the rules. And yet in your heart of hearts, that's where you need to know the power of God at work. There is this beautiful promise that echoes through the Old Testament. And we can particularly find it in Jeremiah in chapter 31 and from verse 31, where God is speaking through Jeremiah and says, you know, "My law, my rules, you know, you might know them in your head, but I'm going to write them on your heart." And for us as God's people, you know, there are certain things we need to know as God's people, there are things we do and there are things we don't do. There are, we need to know our scriptures and to understand how God's people are to live. But what we must understand more than anything is that we could do all those things, we could seem to live the perfect life. And yet in our hearts of hearts, we could be very far from holiness. It is a matter of the heart. Let's hear those words from Jeremiah together, chapter 31. And from verse 31, it says this.
"The days are coming, declares the Lord, 'When I will make a new covenant with the people of Israel and with the people of Judah. It will not be like the covenant I made with their ancestors, when I took them by the hand to lead them out of Egypt, because they broke my covenant; though I was a husband to them, declares the Lord. This is the covenant I will make with the people of Israel after that time, declares the Lord. I will put my law in their minds and write it on their hearts. I will be their God, and they will be my people. No longer will they teach their neighbor or say to one another, 'Know the Lord;' because they will all know me, from the least of them to the greatest, declares the Lord; for I will forgive their wickedness and will remember their sins no more."
Still today, there's so many things that we do and things that we don't do in order to live a holy life. We still live by the ten commandments. We try to do that, recognizing that they're not ten suggestions for living, but they are commandments for God's people. We practice our faith in all kinds of ways, depending on which denomination we worship with and how we express our faith and our form of worship. But I really pray that for each one of us, that we would take moments today to reflect on how our heart is in holiness. I'm really encouraged by those verses found in Hebrews that remind us that actually, it's only when we draw close to God and come to him that our hearts are cleaned, that our hearts, it says about are sprinkled to be clean. It's only by his grace that our hearts and lives can be clean. It's not about us living a perfect life.
Therefore, brothers and sisters, since we have confidence to enter the most holy place by the blood of Jesus, by a new and a living way opened for us through the curtain, that is his body; and since we have a great priest over the house of God, let us draw near to God with a sincere heart and with the full assurance that faith brings. Let us have our hearts sprinkled to cleanse us from a guilty conscience. And let us have our bodies washed with his pure water. Let us hold unswervingly to the hope we profess; for he who promised is faithful."
When Jesus came to earth to establish the new covenant with God and his people, many people thought that was him doing away with the old covenant, with the old rituals and the old, you know, the old law that was given. But Jesus made it clear, he came to fulfill the law, not to oppose it. And so for you and I, as we reflect on this and work out what holiness looks like in our life, I hope like those verses in Hebrews, we do come to the Lord, we do come to Jesus, knowing it's only him that can clean our hearts. But I hope we too take seriously that call to follow God's laws, to follow God's rules for our life and to seek to live a life which is clean in thought, in word, indeed. It's really important in our own walk of holiness for us to do our utmost for the highest. But to understand that it's his work within our heart that seals our hearts to clean us and to cleanse us. And so this evening, as we reflect on those things and take moments to personally consider, you know, what about my heart? What about my holiness? We take moments to consider that today. And as we do, we're going to share in a beautiful song together, a real prayer that says, "Lord, will you purify my heart? Knowing and understanding that I can live my life and follow all the rules and yet still have a heart which is not clean." We come to God and say, "Lord, purify my heart. Let it be as gold and as precious silver. Purify my heart; let it be as gold, pure gold." This song recognizes the place of God as the refining fire. It understands that as we come to God to have our hearts clean, that often they're tarnished, softened, they're darkened, and they pick up the stuff of life. And so today, I pray that he would refine us. And refining is often a difficult and a painful process. But I pray that he would clean us up, polish us upright, not so we are perfection, but so that we are set apart for him, so that we live this life of holiness with God. Not because we're wonderful and perfect ourselves, but because his grace is all that we need. Let's take these moments of reflection together.
Give me a holy life, spotless and free, cleansed by the crystal flow coming from thee. Purge the dark halls of thought; here let thy work be wrought, each wish and feeling brought captive to thee. Cleanse thou refining flame, all that is mine; self only may remain, if thou refine. Fix the intention sure, make my desire secure; with love my heart keep pure and rooted in thee. All my best works are naught, please they not thee; far past my busy hands thine eye doth see; into the depth of mind, searching the plan designed; gladdened when thou dost find, first of all, thee. Now is my will resigned, and struggles are quelled; clay on the wheel am I, nothing withheld; master, I yield to thee; crumble, then fashion me; flawless and fit to be, indwelt by thee."
I invite you to join me in prayer. Father God, I want to thank you for the teaching we find in your word about living a holy life. I thank you, Lord, that you are a holy God. I thank you, Lord, that you call us to follow you. I thank you that you've given us the example of Jesus, that beautiful example of holy living. And I pray, Lord, that we would hear the challenge of scripture today to remember that it's not just our outward living, but it's the inward heart that we have, which lives a life of holiness. Father, I pray that today you will cleanse and purify each one of our hearts. I pray, Lord, that we would know your grace and your mercy for us. And I pray, Lord, that you will help us to do all we can to live a holy life for you, knowing that the heart of the matter is the matter of our hearts. Help us to keep our hearts close to you. Help us to keep our hearts holy for you, I pray. Bless each one of my friends, I ask just now. Amen. As we move on, there are a number of suggestions, things that we can do if we want to explore further the holiness tradition in our own life. Let's look at those steps together just now. Let's look at those steps together just now. Spend time in prayer, asking the Holy Spirit to purify your heart and your mind. Ask the Holy Spirit to show you how to keep your heart clean and then spend time listening to him. Memorise verses of scripture to recall when you face temptation. Commit to a day of fasting, this could be from food, TV, your phone or music, for example. Next month in our Renovare Bible Study Session, we will be looking at the charismatic tradition. But before then, we will share worship each Sunday and you are more than welcome to join us. I pray that God will bless you in these weeks ahead and that God will use you and that for each one of us, we will continue to explore our faith and be renewed by the power of the Holy Spirit. God bless you today.